Good evening. Thank you all for coming. Hopefully, we'll have a nice, relatively smooth and quick budget hearing this year. I'm going to give a brief overview. Folks who would like to speak will ask that you just indicate and come up and speak at the podium for folks who are either watching remotely or also for the recording. If you have questions, don't be afraid to wave your arms and we'll make sure to pause. But if I don't see anyone approaching or any hands waving, we'll just keep moving. So with that, I'd like to start with a reminder. So this is the 2022 tax rate breakdown. It's a select board approved a couple of months ago. So just for perspective, that's your total tax rate of $25 per thousand. Tonight, we're only talking about the town portion, 683, 27%. So for the other portion, you need to go to the school district or the county. So we're only talking about the 27% tonight, the town portion. So you have in your handout, if anyone hasn't received them, let me know, or we have copies in the back or in the front. So you have a copy of the town warrant, which outlines the items we're going to be discussing. First item is election of officers. No discussion needed on that. And also, warrant Article II is zoning amendments. Those have been covered by public hearings at the planning board, so they're not subject to discussion tonight. While you're reading those or after you have questions, some of the staff would be happy to answer those, but they're not the focus of our meeting tonight. So the first item we will be discussing tonight is the 2023 operating budget. Total operating budget of $7,425,000. I'm not going to read all the statutory language there, but you have a copy. That's an increase of 7.4% over the 2022 budget. Most major departments ended up coming in in the 6% to 10% increase range. Talk about some of the factors that led to that. The default budget, which is the choice voters have on the ballot between the recommended budget and the default budget, is that 6.8 million, 64,000, and change. Basically, the same as last year, subject to adjustments for one-time expenditures or for changes in debt service. The default budget is actually slightly lower than last year, primarily due to debt service bonds being paid off. A lot of them are structured. As you pay them off, the payments go down. And that just shows the contrast between the default budget and the recommended budget, about 560,000. So a lot of the increases that the town faces are probably similar to what folks see at home or in their operations. So a lot of the impacts are based on electricity. We're budgeting based on a 50% increase for 2023. We collectively bid our electricity, and that's what our broker has suggested that we budget based on. Heating oil, we bid in the summer. We're looking at a 60% increase over last year. And gasoline and diesel are largely market-based, but those are higher than they were about this time last year. Fortunately, they've come down a little bit, but still generally higher. So I'm going to highlight a few of the various line items. You do have a copy of the budget summary, and I have about 10 copies of the full budget, about 15 pages, if anyone's interested in going through line item by line item. So one of the major increases in the planning department, we've added a land use and zoning coordinator position. Helps staff the planning office, works on grant administration, and is going to be prioritizing zoning and code enforcement, which is an issue where we needed to add a little bit more staff. The fire department, in addition to some of the other factors like fuel and electricity that we discussed, they're also looking at increased costs to vehicle and equipment Highway major increase is based on asphalt, both to keep up with maintenance of our roads and also the price as that is a petroleum product. Recreation, we're working on increasing the recreation. The transition, unfortunately, Scott was finally allowed to retire, and we've gone to a contracted operation, WSO Plus. So seeing a slight increase in that department. And the major decrease is debt services. I mentioned also when we were talking about the default budget, we're paying down some of our debt. I believe we paid off the North Swansea plant upgrade. So again, just to loop back to the summary, 508,000 and change increase, 7.4%. Non-property taxing. Revenues are slightly up, about 72,000. And so it shows here the total amount to be raised by the budget and the estimated tax rate impact based on 2022 values for the budget. Any questions or input generally on the budget at this point? Seeing none, we'll proceed. So just like to give these breakdowns because as we're talking about how folks pay towards different departments, I think sometimes it's helpful to just kind of break down. So if you had a $200,000 valued property, your total tax bill was about $5,000. And of that, 1350 is the town portion, so that's that piece of the pie that I showed at the beginning. And then that's broken down kind of into some of the major budgets to get you a sense of how much you're paying towards those various departments, just as a kind of contrast. So that just shows the pie graph of the different departments. Again, those same breakdowns, police department, 17, fire department, 9%, highway, 15% is for a breakdown of the overall budget. And this is the chart. Again, shows the major departments, the changes from, this is what was approved in 2022, what's proposed, and then the change from year to year. Breakdown of the revenues. Obviously, the largest revenue source, probably not a surprise, is the property tax, 48%. Next largest is motor vehicle registrations at the 23%, and then it goes down from there. And just a chart that shows the budgeted versus estimated revenues. We have an article like this every year for folks that routinely come. So we have these two articles. I'm going to skip on to the next part that goes into the explanation, but if anyone has any questions on any of these specific items or discussion, we can get to them after go through the overview. So we have a few more articles this year related to capital reserve and expendable trust, but we normally have these two. So this first one is kind of all the non-highway stuff, and then the next one is all the highway and cemetery-related items or road-related. Just breaking down the differences from year to year. So this article is slightly up. As you'll see, the next one is slightly down. So the approximate tax rate impact is 43 cents per thousand. These articles are developed by our capital improvement program committee. I believe they have an opening if anyone's interested. Not seeing any hands yet, but you can contact me after the meeting. I'll jump at once. So any questions on this first one? So again, these are the funds we're discussing. Keep going to Article Six.
Recording in progress.
Act Five again. So while we're working on the technical issues, any questions so far? We've gone over the budget or the other two warrant articles? So Article Six is putting funds into capital reserves for town bridges and cover bridges. This was based on SB 401 that the state approved last year, provided funding to all towns throughout the state towards their bridges. We didn't have any active projects that we could use that for in 2022, so we've been advised that we can put that into our two bridge-based capital reserve funds. So we've kind of divided it up somewhat evenly between town bridges and cover bridges. So the cover bridges probably will largely go towards painting. We painted the Thompson Cover Bridge this year. We'll work on getting a plan to do the other ones in subsequent years. Because this is coming from state funds, there's no direct tax impact, so it's neutral. And it also, like I mentioned, helped us reduce the various capital reserves in the
While we're paused, where in here does it show the income that we receive from the added fees on our registrations that are dedicated to streets and bridges?
So Mr. Tatro was asking about the $5 motor vehicle fee that folks pay when they register their vehicles. $5 goes into the municipal transportation capital reserve fund. And so the answer is it's not on the list that you have in your packet because it's not one that we have in appropriation, putting money into the funds, but I can have that amount at the deliberative session. The finance director informs me that it has roughly $52,000 in it. So it gets approved on a project-by-project basis? So it's not part of the general fund activity? But if we say, I think we use some on the South Winchester-West and Swansea Street project. So when the select board approved that contract, some of the funds came out of that capital reserve fund? So Article Seven is related to putting funds into the fire station's capital reserve fund. As you, folks who have come to these meetings recently, probably noticed that normally we have a fire station project early on for a bond. We did not do that for a few reasons, which we'll mention here. So this article is basically instead of that. We're seeing, as I'm sure you've probably heard in the news, with interest rates, significantly higher interest rates. So even though I knew we weren't having a bond article, I checked with the municipal bond bank on what sort of rate we would be looking at. The rate last year at this time was 2.5% for municipal bond, and this year it was 5.5%. And so over the term of a 20-year loan, that would be an additional $1 million that the project would have cost. So for that reason and a couple others, but mainly that reason, we decided it was not a good time to go forward such a significant bond. Reasons were building costs, which obviously have been for the last few years, but also the Menadonoc Regional School District is going for a significant facility bond. We didn't really want to compete with that. They've been patient while we've had our projects. So we thought this was not a good year for us to move forward. And then also just the budget factors. When we talk about the total cost, it is significant, and we didn't think it was a good year to ask for the fire station as well. But we didn't want to totally ignore the issue. It is still something that needs to be resolved, so we thought putting money into the capital reserve to save towards that was a good option. We've structured it so that half is funded from the general fund balance and half is funded from general taxation. And the tax rate impact is that 24 cents per thousand. Any questions or input on that? Seeing none, we'll proceed. Next up is Article Eight. So this is seeking to appropriate $22,000 towards on-call stipends. We'll talk a little bit more about what that means. So a lot of folks don't have a great handle on what the fire station staffing is currently. So right now, the full-time and part-time staff cover 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. And then we have weekend, what we call per diem shifts, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And basically, any other hours, it's the expectation that our on-call members will respond as they are available, but they don't necessarily have, okay, I'm responsible for days and someone else is responsible for Tuesdays. So they're kind of all on-call at the same time. So what we're trying to do is to basically identify two folks per night, two who stay close and available to respond. They'll get compensated $50 per shift and then their normal rate if they get a call and come in. So the goal is to respond to more calls, especially during off-hours, which have been increasingly challenging with people with, you know, our members' full-time jobs and other obligations. So the funding is based on six months and then would be for the full year in 2024. And it basically adds the potential for 105 hours per week of dedicated on-call coverage that is not currently there. So I'm going to show some visuals that show the current availability and then the proposed. So this one here, which again you have in your packet, shows the current availability. So the green is this daytime coverage on the weekdays, the coverage by part-time per diem on the weekends, and then these blocks are when we're just relying on hoping the on-call members are available and able to come. So then the proposed kind of extends this an hour, so these align. And then we'll have these on-call shifts from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m. So two members per shift is the goal. Any questions or comment on that?
Do you think that might prevent others who are not on-call from saying, well, those guys are covering it, so I'm not coming in? Something like that.
Chief, come up and help answer that?
So the question was, would that prevent others to come in? No, I don't think so unless that call is easily handled by two members. So in an EMS call, or I mean, if it's a fire call where you need a full response, whatever members are available will respond accordingly. I don't think that's going to deter other members to not respond. Sometimes EMS calls are easily handled with two members plus Delusio even.
Go ahead and know the nature of the follow-up variables.
Yeah, there's a lot of variables to go with that, but a full response would still
Any other questions or comments on that article? Seeing none, we'll keep going. Article Nine, another sewer-based article. So last year, the town had an article to dissolve the Sewer Commission effective 2023 town meeting. We also have these three capital reserve funds that the sewer commissioners are currently agents to expend. So I think it's implied that the selectmen would be then basically acting as the sewer commissioners, but out of kind of an abundance of caution, we had this article here to make clear that the selectmen will be agents to expend from those articles or from those Seeing no questions or comments on that one, keep going. So this next article, there was legislation in 2022 that expanded the veterans' tax credits to include currently serving members. So previously, they were only for discharged members. And as part of that change, which I think is a good one, the Department of Revenue Administration recommends that towns re-adopt those credits to make clear that the exemptions still apply, or the credits still apply, even though basically the qualifications have changed slightly. So the town has these two credits that apply, the all-veterans' tax credit and the optional veterans' tax credit. They're both currently $500. Those were increased a few years ago. So basically, this is just making sure our current exemptions continue. Any questions or comments on that, sir?
Thank you. Did the change in the law affect the disabled benefits? Are you 100% disabled? In there?
I defer to Mr. York on this one. He was just informing me about that earlier. Do you want me to relay what you said? He had spoken to the state speaker of the House, and those are still covered without the re-adoption. Yes, sir. This opportunity to read an email I received from John Bosdras, 154 Partridge Berry Lane. He stated, "As a Vietnam veteran, I go on record as being in favor of the continuation of the property tax discount granted to military veterans." Not seeing any other question or comments? Yeah, the chair reminded, and we appreciate your input, and it would be great to see you at the deliberative session on February 7th as well. Thank you. We are cruising right along. So warrant Article 11 is a modification to the town's solar exemption. So currently, the town has an exemption that for solar improvements up to 35,000, the value is placed on the property. Then the exemption, if it's applied for and qualifies, basically nullifies the increase in property increase. So it's important to note, it's not, you put on solar panels, then you get a general discount on your property value. It's only related to the improvements from the solar panels. So the current exemption maxes out at 35,000. The town's Energy Commission recommended that the $35,000 cap be removed, partly due to inflationary factors. The cost of them is increasing, and also with the higher electric rates, more people are exploring them for larger properties. So the usage is still capped at, I think, 25% of the generation, up to 25% over the amount that's generated at the property. So someone can't put, you know, a huge commercial array and then get it exempted, but it's only based on the usage plus a little bit, basically. Seeing no other questions or concerns on that, we'll continue. Look at that, 11, we're already through. So this just provides a summary of if all of the articles pass, what we'd be looking at in terms of total amount to be raised by taxes and what the estimated tax rate, again, based on 2022 values would be. So for a property of $200,000 house, that property we talked about earlier, you'd be looking at a town tax payment, again, that smaller piece of the pie, be about 1566 or an increase of $200 from 2022. And the next steps would be deliberative session, which again, is February 7th at 7:00 p.m. at Wickham Hall. That's the opportunity for voters to, again, make amendments or continue discussion. And then the voting day is March 14th at the Menadonoc Regional School District's gym, which we're greatly appreciative that they've been allowing us to use that and continue to do so. And that's from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. So we'll pause again here for another opportunity if anything has sparked your interest or you thought of a question that came up before that you didn't want to ask before. Again, have the full budget up here if folks want. We've got the handouts. Next step would be the deliberative session. So I don't know if the select board has anything to add at this point or... Seeing no one jumping up, still no one on.
Hi. Bruce Tatro again. I noticed the line item for the ambulance service. It's up some, but my question is, is there enough money in there to switch over to, how do I put it delicately, replace basically Delusio with the county, with a contract with the county? Because it's, I don't know what you folks have heard, but the rumor is out there that we're not going to have Delusio so much longer. So I'm wondering what the selectmen are planning on doing so that we can continue to have ambulance service to the town.
What we're aware of is that Michael will be meeting with the county administrator and our county commissioner and the, I've forgotten the chief's name, at the Cheshire County Ambulance Service. I'm sorry, I back off. Michael will be meeting with Delusio in the next week or two to discuss their ongoing operations and to ensure us that we can rely upon them for coverage. As you are aware, we've been approached twice by the county to switch to utilizing their service. Delusio gives us a better value, and the county has not been able to give us firm numbers. They've given us an approximate number for year one and then very vague approximate values for two and three. So we believe it's in the town's best interest to continue to utilize Delusio's service. If it arises that for some reason we're not able to, we'll shuffle funds around to make sure that we can connect with the county. But I think it's important that our representatives recognize that it would be very helpful if the county were able to give us some more specific data. And we understand it's a work in progress, but it would have been irresponsible of us if we had engaged the county based on the information that was provided.
To add to that, so there is some additional money in that line item, not specifically for that item that you're necessarily discussing, but just to ensure there is some additional flexibility. So I believe our contract right now with Delusio is about 42,000 a year, and I think we have 60,000 in that line item. So we have been, initially, we put some in expecting that the county was going to buy Delusio, which is the point we were at this time last year. This time last year, that was our understanding. Now we understand that's not going to happen, so we've continued to put a little bit more money away, but we're also not going to budget for the higher service if we're not using Seeing no one else approach, I think it'd be appropriate for the board to close the public hearing, and we'll hope to see all of you and more at the deliberative session on February 7th.
Thanks for coming out. Public hearing's closed.
Public hearing's closed.